I'm calling to order this hearing. This is a public hearing of the Committee of the Whole. I'm Phil Mendelson, Chair of the Committee of the Whole, and also Chair of the Council. Today is Tuesday, September 15, 2020. The time is 12:05 in the afternoon, and this hearing is being conducted via Zoom video conference. So this is being conducted virtually, although it is through several channels available to the public and also is being recorded. The purpose of this hearing today is to hear testimony regarding PR-23-892, which is entitled "Sense of the Council Woodrow High Woodrow Wilson High School Renaming Protocol Resolution of 2020." This resolution was introduced by Councilmember Shea and co-introduced by Councilmembers Grasso, Robert White, Pinto, McDuffie, Gray, Trayon White, Bonds, Silverman, Nadeau, Todd Allen, and myself. And it was introduced on July 20, 2020. The bill, the resolution is introduced with declare the sense of the council that, first, the council supports efforts to consider whether or not to change the name of Woodrow Wilson High School and, more broadly, all public schools in the District of Columbia to ensure that the individuals for whom the school buildings are named represent the mission, vision, and values of DCPS in the residents of the district, including consideration of whether the building name honors an individual who supported or enabled acts of discrimination. Second, DCPS should act quickly to update its school naming protocol, which should include procedures for DCPS to seek community input on potential new names prior to a specific name being proposed or otherwise selected, and procedures that permit a proposal to provide information on how the current name of the school does not represent the DCPS mission, vision, and values. And then, fourth, I skipped three because that was time limited. Number four, DCPS should immediately convene virtual community meetings, at least one each, with the school's local school advisory team, ANC3E, and the Tennytown Neighbors Association to consider whether the name of Woodrow Wilson High School should be changed, and if so, what name should be selected. And following those meetings, DCPS should provide the council with a summary of the discussion, including any recommendations made. The record in this matter will be open for two weeks. That is, the record will close at 5:00 PM on September 29, 2020. So anybody who's testifying today who doesn't have written comments has two weeks to submit them, please do so. And anybody else who is not testifying today but wishes to submit a statement is encouraged to do so. And again, the record will close in two weeks. That is, 5:00 PM on September 29. I'm going to, we have 10 witnesses who signed up. And with the Zoom platform, they, people have to sign up in advance and register. We're going to let all 10 folks into the panelist room so that they can testify one after the other, and then we'll have questions for them. Following their testimony, we will hear from a representative of the DC Public School System. I see two colleagues who've joined us. Let me recognize the author of the resolution, Councilmember Shea, and then Councilmember Grasso.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for scheduling the hearing so quickly on this important resolution. I, along with my colleagues, introduced it on July 20, 2020, shortly before we began our summer recess. However, I should note that there have been efforts underway to change the name of Wilson High School for several years. And now, at this particular time, it dovetails with protests and actions that have arisen around the country demanding an end to racial police violence and also looking more broadly at the many aspects of society that embody sort of racist policies. And one, one of those is the issue about the names of monuments or buildings or other things of that kind. Now, as, as you mentioned, and as is the case, Woodrow Wilson High School was named after President Woodrow Wilson, who's perhaps best known for leading the country through the First World War. But what many people may not know, however, is that President Wilson and his administration oversaw the large-scale segregation, demotion, and firing of Black federal employees because of their race. And the racist actions that President Wilson took and his administration implemented caused substantial and lasting and continuing harm to Black residents and families in the district. Now, when we choose to publicly recognize an historic figure by erecting a statue or monument, putting their name on a street or park or a building, we're, in effect, endorsing that person's legacy. And nobody, nobody has a right to have a building or anything named after them, but we have to see whether that person meets our criteria for, for naming. And obviously, there are many things to celebrate with respect to President Wilson's legacy, but there are also many things, some quite terrible, to condemn. And we have to consider the message that we send if we continue to honor an individual who directly and deliberately caused substantial harm to Black residents in the District of Columbia. And it seems to me, if we don't do this, we are implicitly and perhaps explicitly saying that those actions were acceptable. And we shouldn't promote even ambivalence with respect to racism and discrimination and the daily harm that, you know, this, this name on, on Wilson High School signifies. So I don't know what name should replace Wilson's name. It should be replaced, that's clear. But there are many wonderful people who have given so much to the district in the area of education, perhaps in other areas, and so many Black residents, really, who, they should be honored in this way. So there's no want of substitutes. And we may hear from folks today about who they may be, but in the first instance, we have to replace, we have to replace this name. And ultimately, I think we have to have legislation to do that. But in any case, the purpose today is to make clear that we want Wilson High School to remove the name of Wilson as, as the high school name. So I want to thank everybody. I want to thank all of my colleagues for joining me in this. And thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for having this hearing so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shea. Councilmember Grasso?
Yes, good afternoon, Chairman Mendelson. I also want to thank you for holding this hearing so quickly. I also want to thank Councilmember Shea for taking the lead on this sense of the council resolution. As she noted, this is something that people have been asking us about for a number of years now, and I'm glad to see some movement on the council here. Our society has struggled to come to terms with its racist past, and it all has been complicated by efforts to spare white people's feeling guilty or not engaging in the kind of debates that need to take place. In fact, we've sanitized the very word racist fairly often. Today, the term is too often reserved solely for members of the Ku Klux Klan or folks who consistently use derogatory racial slurs. But even by those lax standards, Woodrow Wilson would be seen today as extremely racist. As President Woodrow Wilson oversaw the resegregation of multiple federal agencies, going so far as to place Black people who could not logistically be separated in literal cages. Federal agencies under Woodrow's administration outright fired Black employees and began requiring photographs on job applications to ensure that Black applicants were denied employment immediately. He spoke positively of segregation, refused to appoint Black statesmen to public office, and even helped kill a proposal from Japan calling for the treaty ending World War I to recognize the principle of racial equity at the Versailles Convention in 1919. Most notably, Woodrow Wilson was a vocal supporter of the KKK, so much so that Confederates, those who sought to destroy and end this country simply because they wanted to continue to own Black people as property, celebrated his election. He strongly opposed Black people having the right to vote, even defending the South's suppression of Black voters. The racist outlook he held and the racist policies he pursued laid the groundwork for another great injustice, the decimation of the free Black community at Fort Reno. That community was entirely wiped out when the federal government decided to condemn most of its housing to build Deal Middle School and Wilson High School, a park, and a water tower. Woodrow Wilson does not deserve to have a DC public school named after him. It was wrong to open the school in 1935 as an all-white school bearing his name, and it is wrong now to keep it open under that same name. The District of Columbia, our government, nor our people, or are not without our own complicity in perpetuating racism and white supremacy, but we also do not believe that is what the District of Columbia stands for, and we are constantly striving toward the greater ideal of racial equity. If DC public schools are serious about this work, they should begin the process of renaming this school immediately. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Grasso. Councilmember McDuffie has joined us. Mr. McDuffie, do you have a statement?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
A little scratchy, but it's the best.
Some, some slight technical difficulties. Let me, let me just begin, and I'll keep my statement very brief by thanking you for holding this hearing and thanking Councilmember Shea and, I believe, all the other members of the council for introducing this important measure. I signed on to this measure because this is something that I've supported for quite some time, actually, and it's stated so very publicly over the last at least three years or so. And I said so both as a council member, but more importantly, I think, for the process in thinking about changing names of schools, I think it should be community-driven, student-driven, parent-driven. And so I said so, more importantly, as an alum of Woodrow Wilson High School. I think it's been stated by each of you, Woodrow Wilson's role, both as president with respect to, you know, his role in World War I and as well as the UN establishment. But I think we have to make sure that when we consider naming buildings and other monuments and markers after people, we should put those considerations in the full context and scope of what they have accomplished and some of the things that they have done that are less reputable. And I think it's well-known that he played a chief role in segregating the federal government. I think it's probably less well-known, but, but important that Woodrow Wilson is the president who aired the racist film Birth of a Nation on the White House lawn. And so I think that the city should definitely be moving in this direction. I know the mayor's taken some steps to consider processes for, for reviewing markers and statues and names on buildings in the District of Columbia. I think you all know, and I've gotten a lot of support from my colleagues, that I've introduced two bills. One, that would allow the city to build some statues in honor of women and minorities in the District of Columbia, as well as a bill that would comprehensively review markers, statues, and other memorials that have been named for people to see whether it's appropriate to keep their names. And so, you know, in the wake of all the calls for racial justice that we've seen over the last several months after the killing of George Floyd and countless other Black people, I think it's, it's pastime, frankly, that we do so. They've done it at Princeton University, where they've changed the name and removed Woodrow Wilson's name from their school of international affairs. I know that GW locally is going through a process right now where they're considering changing the names of buildings on their campus. And I think it makes sense. And I've been a champion for the District of Columbia to do so throughout our city on properties owned by our government and locally. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having this. And I appreciate all the witnesses who are here to testify, who have been pushing for this, as well as the students, parents, faculty, alum, and others that I've heard over the last several years who similarly have been making the call to change the name of Woodrow Wilson High School and some of the other schools and other buildings in the District of Columbia that I think would fall into this category as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McDuffie. I believe those are, I've recognized all the council members who are here. So why don't we turn to the witnesses? What I'm going to do is I'm going to recognize each of you in the order on the witness list. And then, following the 10 of you, we will have questions from council members. The hearing noticed, I believe, indicated three minutes per individual. Let me just double-check that. Yes, three minutes. And there, if you are in gallery view on your screen, you will see a clock that tells you how much time is left. So we'll begin with Judith Ingram, followed by Ayomi Wolf.
Good afternoon, Chairman Mendelson and members of the council. My name's Judith Ingram, and I'm the founder of the DC History and Justice Collective. For over two years, we've engaged in a grassroots education and organizing effort aimed at stripping the racist president Woodrow Wilson's name off DC's largest and most diverse school. We call for that change not in a month or a year, or whenever the community comes to a consensus on a more fitting name, but now, not one more student should graduate from a school named after the leader who segregated the federal government and spurred the forces that would destroy Black communities to make way for exclusively white neighborhoods. Chairman Mendelson, when we met with you last summer to request DC council action, you sent us to DCPS, noting that it had a naming policy in place. The three-and-a-half-page protocol was short on detail, but the main planks were clear: grassroots initiative, community engagement managed by DCPS, decision made by the chancellor and approved by the mayor and the council. When we met with DCPS last fall, the community engagement staff seemed encouraging, and it offered to contribute a survey to measure public support. But the survey never came, and the only community engagement was what our collective had initiated: a scholarly forum and community discussion on President Wilson's legacy, a change.org petition, a Black History Month presentation for Wilson students. For months, we heard nothing from the central office. DCPS officials finally let us know earlier this year that they were reevaluating the school naming policy. DCPS seemed to fear the very community engagement it was supposed to support. One telling sign was on the night of our February 2019 community forum. No one from the central office showed up, but I overheard someone from that office call and direct a Wilson administrator not to allow TV cameras into the event. Were they scared of genuine public debate? A tumultuous year and a half has passed since then. The twin tragedies of the pandemic, with its disproportionately harsh toll on communities of color, and the police killings of Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, and other Black citizens have thrown the legacy of racist leaders such as Wilson into stark relief. They're the direct motivation for the vast majority of our 22,000-plus, change.org signatories to demand that Wilson High School be renamed. Considering DCPS's record of stalling on this issue, we propose that the council now exert its authority and take the lead. As a first step, the council should immediately strip Wilson's name off the school. If the council still wants DCPS input, it should direct it to solicit community ideas and recommend a new name in various short order, say, by no later than January 30. That would allow the council time to enact legislation to ensure that the new name is printed on the diplomas of the class of 2021. We owe that to our students, teachers, and everyone who calls DC home. Thank you for listening to our testimony and advancing this cause.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Ms. Ayomi Wolf, followed by Sarah Morgan. You're muted, Ms. Wolf.
Good morning. Good morning, councilmembers, comrades, and fellow Washingtonians. My name is Ayomi Wolf, and I'm a 2020 graduate of Woodrow Wilson High School. Despite feeling tremendous pride to have graduated from Wilson, I've also found great disdain in seeing that name that is on my diploma, Woodrow Wilson. This enmity began when a presentation was given at a diversity task force meeting during my sophomore year. We learned about the horrible destruction of Reno City and how the policies Wilson implemented during his presidency were harnessed to destroy and disperse a primarily Black neighborhood that once stood where my high school stands today. With that information, I was eager to join the movement to change my school's name. I was approached by the amazing Judy Ingram, a co-founder of the History and Justice Collective, to speak at a panel discussion on the name change in February 2018. I was hooked, and from then on, to the summer of my, after my senior year, I worked with Judy and Tintin Apple and Sally Schwartz and many more to change my school's name. We arranged meetings with council members, wrote letters, had presentations, protested, and generally worked our butts off for two years. A question I'm often posed with is why? Why do people feel the need to change the names of schools, of bridges, to tear down statues and monuments? I cannot speak for all people, but what I can say is this: Woodrow Wilson's name upon my school is a sickening reminder of the evil he has done to people who look like me. Woodrow Wilson was a racist man. He segregated the federal government, destroying the Black middle class. He showed Birth of a Nation at the White House, a movie which would reignite the KKK. When asked to address lynchings, he denied aid and reform. Knowing that, how could I walk every day underneath his name knowing what he did, what he believed in? How could I feel safe in a building named after a man who believed that a Black man's place was beneath the white man's boot? How could I let students remain ignorant of what he did? How could I? I want to go back to something I said two years ago at a panel discussion when a Wilson alum questioned my school spirit for wanting to change the name. I soon found out that that alum was from Wilson pre-desegregation, so take with that what you will. The city paper actually called me on this. I present the quote to you now: "To say that it's not worth to change the name just because you may feel like you're using school spirit? I'm not losing any school spirit. I'm enacting school spirit by wanting to change the name. I love my school so much, I really do, and I want to be part of its growth. I want my school to be the best it can be, both inside and out. However, this is not to say that, once we change the name, systemic problems surrounding education will be gone, and the school itself will be cured of the racism inside. I only wish that perhaps through small changes like this, because this is small in comparison to the tremendous work that needs to be done to fix Wilson in all high schools in DCPS. Those small changes like this, through small changes like this, we can provide hope to the community that further change is possible. You must make a change for the better, because if not now, then when? Thank you, Councilmember, thank you, that's it."
I thank you, Ms. Wolf. Sarah Morgan, followed by Michelle Ballinger. Ms. Morgan?
Hello. Okay. Um, okay. Good afternoon, Chairman Mendelson and members of the council. Hello, my name is Sarah Morgan, and I'm a senior at Woodrow Wilson Senior High School. As a concerned Wilson student and activist, I would like to rename my high school. And if we do rename this school, I expect the person to name it after it to be Black. It is extremely obvious to me that Wilson's presidential legacy is racism, especially for Black people in DC. These facts alone make the name of Wilson unacceptable. But beyond this, his ideals and policies go directly against tiger spirit and what DCPS stands for. The DCPS vision is that every student feels loved, challenged, and prepared to positively influence society and thrive in life. Their mission is to ensure that every school guarantees that their students reach full potential through rigorous and joyful learning experiences provided in a nurturing environment. But this name does not show that DCPS is attempting to make me feel loved. I'm a Black child, and I haven't been provided a nurturing environment either, not while I attend a school named after a man who would hate me for my skin and actively destroyed my communities in Chevy Chase. His racism outweighs his positive attributes to America. His legacies in economics and diplomacy and whatever are not his own legacies. And what he did in those areas doesn't cancel out what he did to Black people in his own country. His economic legacy for Black people is ruining our prosperous communities. And where was his diplomacy when it came to bridging the gap in race relations? In June, I organized a peaceful protest so that we could fight to change Wilson's name in a week before the DC History and Justice Collective did the same. Over 100 Wilson students and alumni came out and showed their dismay at the name between these weeks. And at this protest, my friend and fellow activist, Annalucia Pardorn, said this in reference to Woodrow Wilson: "His legacy is racism. He hurt Black people, and when you hurt Black people, nothing else that you do matters." Regardless of the good that he did, his name does not deserve to be on the school building, especially in the neighborhood where he forcefully pushed Black people out to make room for white suburbs. The irony is sick, and, quite honestly, it's a terrible example for the students that attend. The message it sends to white Wilson students is, "Being racist is okay, as long as you make some good choices." And to Black kids like myself, it's just blatant disrespect. To Brown kids, it shows that DCPS clearly doesn't care about Brown people. It's not fair that on my diploma, this man's name is going to be memorialized in 2021 if nothing changes. He would have hated to see me thrive. And even though there's a sliver of satisfaction there in beating the odds that he tried to set against me, it's way more satisfying to change the name and strip him of this memorial. It would be more satisfying to name Wilson after a Black man. And it's not fair to me that I have to graduate from a school named after a man that actively tried to push the Black middle class out. It's not okay for his example to be held, and it's the sign saying that forcedful gentrification is okay. He pushed Black communities out that were there since slavery's end, successful Black communities out of Tennytown, and he moved Black kids from schools and the federal office named it after him. I'm not sure how much more obvious and straightforward it gets. It's clearly unethical to keep the name as it is. And in these times, we're actively pushing for racial justice to change institutionally, something as basic as renaming the school is bare minimum. Thank you.
I thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Ballinger, followed by Sally Schwartz.
Hi, good morning. Sorry, my angle's a little weird. Okay, thanks for having me. My name is Michelle Ballinger, and I'm a teacher at Wilson High School. I've been teaching there for about 20 years, and everything I say today is based on my countless conversations I've had with my fellow teachers there, students, many of whom are African-American, as well as the scholarship of historians, including many Black historians. And I'm not going to recap, I think, as a history teacher, as much as I'd like to, too much about Wilson himself, but more so how the name Wilson affects us in the classroom as we're trying, as we're trying to teach. I don't know if you've been to Wilson High School before, but it's an amazing community, highly diverse, full of students who are engaged, curious, and accomplished. And as a faculty, we are devoted to them. We are devoted to building a healthy and equitable community in which all students can thrive. We're committed to doing that work. In a way, we compensate for the ways in which our students are systematically denied equity and justice by the society they live with, live in. And I do think that the name Wilson is part of that process, and that's why the name needs to be changed. Our students, when learning about Wilson, they process his actions, and it has way too familiar of a, of a tone for a lot of them. When Wilson told civil rights activists that they shouldn't see segregation as a humiliation, but rather as a benefit, they understood that and identified that gaslighting. They recognize Wilson's culpability when he didn't intervene as racist white mobs roamed our city in 1919, lynching Black residents. And they also don't see, don't accept the idea of Wilson being a man of his times, because they know that those times were also shaped by the people who challenged Wilson: Ida B. Wells, Monroe Trotter, Mary Trish Terrell, and more. But I do think that the thing that sticks with me the most is when talking about Wilson and the way in which he prevented the integration of Princeton University, when he said that the whole temper and tradition of the place is such that no Negro has ever applied for admission, is what he said about Princeton. And they recognize that sort of insidious form of white supremacy that doesn't really need laws to keep it in place, but rather promotes a culture of exclusion, right, and gatekeeping. And so that really sticks with me, the whole temper and tradition of such a place. We're trying to create an equitable community at our school, and that is disturbed by the presence of Wilson's name. I hope you'll change it immediately and listen to the students. They've spoken loudly and clearly, and it's time for them to be heard.
Thank you, Ms. Ballinger. Sally Schwartz, followed by Justin Khan.
Hey, hi, thank you. My name is Sally Schwartz, and I'm a graduate of Wilson, class of 1968. So we appreciate this hearing as a way to hopefully clarify and expedite So we appreciate this hearing as a way to hopefully clarify and expedite the process for renaming Wilson High School. This effort has been a slow-moving train, and we clearly need the DC Council to help get us to the finish line. Testifying today to make two simple points. One, the decision to remove Woodrow Wilson's name from the school needs to be announced immediately. It scares me that we're talking about possibly starting the process from the beginning. And secondly, DCPS needs to put in place and announce a school renaming policy that is clear, transparent, allows for broad community participation, and tied to critical discussions around our shared history and aspirations for creating more equitable, inclusive, and inspiring schools. I was with that group that met with you, Chairman Mendelson, with Judy Ingram. She describes it exactly. We went to DC Public Schools and met with officials there. We left feeling good about our collaboration and, you know, we have a great group of people with the DC History and Justice Collaborative. We also agreed on a two-step process that we thought was very appropriate to this particular school. First, tackle the decision to remove the name Wilson, and then, second, look at the new name. Since then, of course, there now is no process, and our efforts seem to be stuck in that first step. Discussions about changing the name of the school have gone back, as far as I know, to the 1970s, when many of us wanted the name changed to Vincent Reed High School. He was my assistant principal, became superintendent of schools, and was much beloved by his students and colleagues. But of course, more recently, we've seen Wilson teachers, the collective, and with the resurgent Black Lives Matter movement, there's just a lot of focus now on the inappropriate of Wilson's name on that building, which I won't talk about. But there's just broad consensus, it's time to change the name. Locally, members of the state board, the mayor, the mayor's DC Faces Task Force, members of the council have expressed support for the name change. Yet, we're still talking about Woodrow Wilson. We still seem to be stuck in the same place. No decision seems to have been made. We don't really know who's in charge, and there's no publicly shared process. So I urge you to please press DCPS to announce the new school renaming process and to call on whoever is empowered to make the decision to announce that Woodrow Wilson's name will be removed so that we can move on to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Justin Conner, followed by Neil Flanagan.
Thank you. My name is Justin Conner. I am a Washington DC resident since 1999. I live, work, and raise my daughter in Washington DC, where she attends DC Public Schools, Murch Elementary. My family and I are appreciative and loyal constituents of Councilmember Che, and we live about a quarter mile from Wilson High School. I'm familiar with the history of Mr. Wilson's actions to resegregate the federal government, which had been integrated and hired many African-Americans in Washington DC as a result of Reconstruction. Wilson himself fired 15 out of 17 black supervisors working in the federal government at that time. And to further enable his racist discrimination, in 1914, the federal government began requiring photographs on job applications. As noted by Councilmember Grosso, Wilson's policies were racist even for his time, even when we consider the norm of the day in terms of how African-Americans were treated. There's no need to further recount President Wilson's racist history, which has already been done so by others today, and as recognized by Princeton University's decision three months ago to rename its public policy school. There's a clear Washington DC nexus here between Wilson's racist actions and how his actions affected African-American employees of the federal government, which is, of course, a major employer in our area. And that connection to Washington DC should not be overlooked in considering whether to have a Washington DC public school named after him. I strongly support this legislative proposal to rename Wilson High School. Two names that I would suggest for consideration as potential honorable replacements for the name of the school would be either Mr. Lawrence Guyot or Ms. Eleanor Holmes Norton. Both Mr. Guyot and Ms. Norton were civil rights activists in the United States in the 1960s and helped bring America closer to our values of freedom and justice for all. Mr. Guyot graduated with a bachelor's degree in biology and chemistry in 1963 and directed the Congress on Racial Equality Project in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, and later became director of the Mississippi Freedom Democratic Party. Mr. Guyot was severely beaten many times for his work, including while at Mississippi State Penitentiary, known as Parchman Farm. Guyot helped lay the groundwork for the Voting Rights Act of 1965. He received his law degree in 1971 from Rutgers University, and he moved to Washington DC where he lived and worked until he passed away in 2012. Eleanor Holmes Norton was born in Washington DC, graduated from Dunbar High School, where she was elected junior class president and a member of the Honor Society. She attended Antioch College, Yale University, and Yale Law School. While in college and graduate school, she was very active in the civil rights movement and an organizer for SNC, the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee. While in law school, she traveled to Mississippi for Freedom Summer and worked with Medgar Evers. Ms. Norton has served the District of Columbia with distinction and represented us since 1990, when she was first elected to serve as delegate in the US House of Representatives. Ms. Norton has spoken out so many times on behalf of the residents of the District of Columbia, is a wonderful representative for us in the United States Congress, very responsive to her constituents, employs a terrific staff, and would be a wonderful person to honor by renaming Wilson High School in her honor. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before the council today in support of this legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Conner. Neil Flanagan, followed by Eric Martel.
How are you doing today, councilmembers? Thank you for, thank you for having this hearing. I would, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just heard something. Okay. The, I would just, my remarks will be very brief. I support the sense of the council resolution. I think that's, it's a minimum, and I think it's, I really appreciate the work that the DC History and Justice Collective has done. As you may know, I wrote a Washington City Paper article, and I'm currently writing a book about the Reno community. And when I, that has come to sort of, I think, I think they would, precipitated some of this movement. And when I wrote the article, I found I could not describe the mindsets of the people, of the African-American lawyers and businessmen who resisted the clearance of Reno, without explaining what Woodrow Wilson's policies had done to their, to their lives, their livelihoods, and to their communities. And this sort of sense of doom that had cast over them. So I would say that rather than focusing on Woodrow Wilson's attitudes and other things like that, it really is about focusing on the effects of his policies and the effects of particular policies that precede home rule. So I think that this is a very important step, and I think it's good that the community is leading it. I think that in the future, though, there needs to be a systematic way of looking through this history and looking through these periods that frankly have largely been forgotten in terms of their substance, that will allow communities to take the lead more carefully. And I'd say that in contrast to perhaps the recent DC Faces program, which unfortunately already was suggesting solutions and was very superficial in its delving into history. And I'll just take for, as example, people who are involved in the clearance of Reno. We include Frank Blue and Nolan Hazen, both of whom have buildings named after them. And Hazen in particular was a brother devoted segregationist and was very close to Woodrow Wilson's doctor and had a lot of political sympathies, just as being someone who came from a plantation in Virginia. So I would say that I think that making, taking those steps and searching for not just names of this history that has been largely forgotten and is largely buried in the DC archives is an important step, I think, in terms of moving forward and empowering communities to make similar choices, similar actions to what the DC History and Justice Collaborative has done here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Can I be heard? Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Martel, followed by Guy Durant.
Okay, thank you. My name is Eric Martel. When a prominent individual, long credited with great achievements in our history books, faces criticism for having caused great harms, the fact supporting revision must be overwhelming and fully documented. The fact that the harms mattered to those affected and that they made their plight known through personal petitions and public appeals also, must also be established to eliminate charges that current ethical and legal standards did not yet exist. And finally, the process of revision must be fully transparent. I fully support the removal of President Woodrow Wilson's name from DC Wilson's High, DC's Wilson High School, where I taught world and US history for 25 of my 42 years in DCPS, because the DC History and Justice Collaborative has met these criteria. For more than two years, it has held public meetings, invited pro and con testimony from established historians of the Wilson administration and from Wilson High School alumni, teachers, local residents, and their elected representatives. By contrast, the DC Faces project has been rushed and secretive and has still not yet released its full report. How, for example, did it miss the fact that the DC Commissioners appointed by President Calvin Coolidge, 1923 to '29, were responsible for the removal of the mostly African-American community known as Reno City, the location of Deal Middle School? There is, to my knowledge, no evidence yet that the location of Wilson High School, albeit it is across the street from Reno, has, was in any way, was in any way the work of Woodrow Wilson or his appointed commissioners. President Wilson, through his appointed agency heads, was responsible for driving the final nail into the rise of Jim Crow and the defeat of the progress that was initiated during Reconstruction. For example, he appointed as Secretary of the Navy, Josephus Daniels, who was responsible for, one of the people responsible for, as a newspaper man, the overthrow of a legitimately elected government in Wilmington, North Carolina. To understand Wilson's reputation as a progressive reformer, one has to understand that the definition of progressive reform, as it was described by the Democratic Party of segregation and Jim Crow, included the fact, or included the removal of African-Americans as a component of reform. That was part and parcel of the nature of progressive reform, especially under Democratic Presidents Cleveland and Woodrow Wilson. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Martel. Guy Durant, followed by Donald Graham.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'm wearing green today in honor of my Wilson roots. My name is Guy Durant, and I graduated from Wilson High School in 1982. And I live in Ward Five in northeast, near the Brooklyn CUA metro. I'm a native Washingtonian, and I lived in Ward Three at the time of attending Woodrow Wilson High School in the early 80s. I am testifying today to support a limited renaming of Woodrow Wilson High School, but only to keep the Wilson name under another Wilson name. I rise in support of renaming our high school to John A. Wilson Senior High School or to August Wilson Senior High School. Both men are considered African-American. Nobody is perfect, but John A. Wilson is also the name of the City Hall building, so I figure it should be fine for our local Wilson High School as well. We, as alumni, have invested a lot into the quote "Wilson" name, and we, as Wilson Tigers, don't want to lose that moniker, but we can tweak it by using another Wilson as our namesake. There are no saints, only sinners in this world. I am black, but we all have mixtures of American heritage, both bad and good. I intended Wilson ignorant of Woodrow Wilson's racist past, and had I known, I would have chalked it up to normal, since Washington, Jefferson, and many other founding fathers were also racist. But I don't advocate for removing all monuments or names of races, since that would pretty much eliminate most of America's founding fathers. Rather, I think education is the key, and if we rename, just remember, we have to be aware of human frailties. A few years ago, we might have even named schools after Bill Cosby or a Boy Scout troop leader or a priest with a questionable past. Even Dr. King was not perfect, but we love him. My only point is that when we rename, let's do so only for the most racist and the most despicable, and not just those who are average for their time and culture. Woodrow Wilson is despicable, but he was delected by a racist nation, so I figure it was par for the course at the time. Let's use another Wilson name, but symbols don't fix history. Only hard work fighting for social justice will fix the future. I'm a descendant of Thomas Jefferson and black and Native American ancestors in Charlottesville. I still have family in Charlottesville, Virginia. I know that racism is a legacy to last, but would I remove Jefferson from my history? Probably not. I live with that cruel past and move on towards a greater future. I don't feel the need to forget evil men to transcend beyond them. Renaming may help, but I look forward. Maybe I'm too old to ask for wiping out all racist names, but the new generation may wish to think about, nobody's perfect. And I apologize that I've not yet submitted my comments, and I just wanted to say that I think, you know, people who don't know, August Wilson was a great playwright. John A. Wilson did commit suicide, but he contributed a lot to Washington DC. And so I think keeping the Wilson name would be best.
Thank you, Mr. Durant. Donald Graham.
Chairman Mendelson, councilmembers. I come before you to endorse every word of the testimony of Ms. Ingram and the others who have followed about the need to rename Woodrow Wilson High School and to urge you to rename it, as Sally Schwartz suggested, in honor of Vincent D. Reed, the first African-American principal of this high school and Washington's great superintendent of the late 20th century. If I owned a time machine and could bring it to the hearing, all I would have to do to persuade you would be to let you do what I did so many times, walk down any block in Washington in the company of Vince Reed. It took half an hour to walk a block, as citizen after citizen rushed up to talk to him about how much they loved him as a teacher, as their assistant principal or as their principal, or to share some memory of Vince as the superintendent. The fourteenth of seventeen children in a family in St. Louis, Vince was captain of the football team at West Virginia State University before coming to Washington as a graphic arts teacher. He was smart, hardworking, and a born leader. He worked his way up through the system and became the assistant principal and then the first black principal of Wilson. Before long, he was the superintendent of schools. Addressing everybody in the school system, Vince made clear that he would focus on simple goals. Every school would focus on teaching reading, writing, and math above all else, and the city, this system was willing to be judged by its test scores. This had been controversial. The public face of the system Vince inherited was chaos. Books and supplies were not being delivered to the classrooms on time. Teachers were, went unpaid. Vince once told me that one of his predecessors had hired teachers without giving them a test of any kind on a first-come, first-served basis. Vince addressed the chaos and somehow solved it. Within a year, newspapers printed stories saying that complaints about teachers' pay had fallen to almost zero. And then, citywide test scores started to rise. However, the elected school board, with the exception of Vince's perennial champion and your former colleague Carol Schwartz, was trying to get him to resign, because he was tough, too tough for them, by turning down his favorite projects. And there's no question what his favorite was. Vince wanted to create a college prep high school in Washington DC, Benjamin Banneker Senior High School. He wanted a place where black students, year after year, would show the world how smart they were. After the third turn-down, Vince resigned, quitting the job he loved to get Banneker created. What ensued was the closest thing to a spontaneous political uprising I ever saw in DC. As ordinary citizens called, wrote, picketed the school board and demanded they approve the school and rehire Vince, the school board then reversed itself and created Banneker by a single vote. Vince Reed was a great educator, a great son of the city, beloved by everyone who knew him with a deep connection to our schools and particularly to this high school. So endorsing all the testimony of those who've gone before and recognizing that this is one of many fit names for the school, I urge this name upon you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. I'm going to have some questions, but I'm going to turn to my colleagues first, although I want to admonish all but one of the witnesses. I believe none of you have given us copies of your statements, and I would like to get the statements so that we can include them in the record. Councilmember Che, do you have any questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions, but I very much want to thank all of the witnesses who came today and especially all the work that he was proceeding this, that it took to bring us to this moment. So I want to thank you for that. I also want to make a point about something which is important to me and to the people of Ward Three, where Alice Deal and the Wilson High School are located. The outrageous, despicable clearing of- The outrageous, despicable clearing of Reno City, and also there was, you know, another community nearby, was sort of left in the historical kind of past, I guess. When I first took office some years ago, I learned that there was a building that was the former Reno School, and it was used for stuff to be stored there, or what have you. And so I went to the mayor. Mayor Fenty had just been elected as well. And I said, you know, we need to do something about this school, if nothing else, to make it a commemorative building for what was there before. And the mayor said, "Well, you know what? That building has already been surplus." I said, "Yeah, but like, you're the mayor, so get it back," which he did. And that school now is working as a school as part of Alice Deal Middle School, but it is also a commemorative building. And if you were to go there now, you would see various plaques and the history about the Reno City, so that that's a very, very tiny footnote to the horrible things that happened. But at least, at least, it's not to be left, you know, in the historical bin, trash bin. And so I just wanted to note that, because that was something that, a little sliver of something positive that came out of that horrible experience. In any case, as I said, Mr. Chairman, I simply want to thank all of the witnesses, and I'm glad to see that ideas are already coming forward to replace the name. And I'm sure that at the end of this process, first of all, let's get rid of the name. But at the end of this process, we'll find someone who's worthy to have the high school named after them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Che. Councilwoman McDuffie, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank all the witnesses who took time to testify today. I thought the testimony was enlightening, and I think was clear, is the sort of general theme and consensus that the name be changed. Again, even if we aren't to a point where there is a consensus broadly on what the school should be renamed, there does appear to be a general consensus that the school should not bear the name of Woodrow Wilson. And so I appreciate all of you taking the time to testify. As I've said, I've been a long supporter of doing this and have really appreciated that this effort has been driven by the community. A number of demonstrations at the school, a number of meetings by some of the folks who testified today, organizers of those meetings and others. And it was great to see the two students, one who's a recent alum, I think she took class in 2020, and then the other, who's currently at Woodrow Wilson, also testifying, because I think their voices are equally as important to this process. I've had, no shortage, about five nieces and nephews graduate from Wilson over the last six or seven years, and countless of other relatives who've also graduated from Wilson, as I have, as a part of the class in 1993. And so, Mr. Chairman, again, I appreciate you holding this. I hope that with some of the testimony that we heard today, that, you know, working with you, Mr. Chairman, on one of the measures that I have before the committee, which we've already held a hearing on the Advisory Commissions on Monuments, Markers, and Symbols Establishment Act of 2019, some of these folks might have an interest in contributing their research and history to a more comprehensive process to review the monuments, markers, and symbols, including statues and street names and school names in the District of Columbia, soon. And so we can do this both at Woodrow Wilson and with other monuments and markers throughout District of Columbia. So thank you again, each of you, for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for holding this important here.
Thank you, Mr. McDuffie. So I do have a couple of questions and then a couple of observations. Mr. Martel, you submitted your statement before the hearing, but unfortunately, I didn't have a copy in front of me, so I was sort of trying to keep up with you as you were speaking. Your testimony was clearly oppositional to the current name, but if I heard correctly, and I just want to clarify this, you were making some distinguishing statements with regard to historical accuracy. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. To my knowledge, and I think Mr. Flanagan might say something similar, because I looked at his research as well. Although it seems to make sense that one would think that Wilson High School, directly across Jessup Peak Street from Reno, the Reno area, was somehow, was located on that site as a result of removal of African-American families, I have not seen any evidence to that effect. If there is, then that needs to be presented, you know. But I have asked, a number of former Wilson students have been doing block-by-block research on the history of houses and streets, and when I asked them about a year ago, they were not aware of any evidence that connected the Wilson High School site to any removal. And the fact that Reno City itself was actually, the removal process began under President Coolidge, continued under Hoover, and even under President Roosevelt, and was concluded, I think, in the late 1940s. So, but that doesn't take anything away from the conclusion that Woodrow Wilson's name needs to be removed. What he did in the federal government is sufficient, and the appointees he put in place are very well-established, the fact that he was, in a sense, driving the final nails of Jim Crow into this country's social fabric.
That's helpful, and I appreciate that, because I think one thing that gets lost in these discussions, or maybe I shouldn't say gets lost, but there needs to be care about, is being historically accurate. Let me see, Mr. Graham, while you were testifying and making a good case for Vince Reed, I was thinking to myself, I had a couple of reactions. One was, I think there was some testimony early in this hearing that the council should just simply act to rename the school. I think it's pretty clear from this limited participation in this hearing that there are differing views on what the correct name is. And I'm not sure it's so smart, at this point in the council's process, for us to pick a name as opposed to require and stimulate DCPS to have a public process to pick a name. Kind of going back to the two-step process that somebody had mentioned, I think Ms. Ingram, whether the name should be changed, and then what the new name should be. But, and what was also going through my mind, as I was listening to you, Mr. Graham, there are good reasons for picking Vince Reed, but there are also good reasons for picking other individuals, which then leads to a question, and I'm not so much posing this as a question to you all, but to think about, and the public to think about, and that is, what ought to be the name of a school? Should the name be to tell a story, like a former principal of the school who was there for the first thirty years? We want to tell the story of that school, the history of that school? Or to honor an individual, and there are plenty of people to honor? Or to inspire a student, the students, which could be a different name? And I don't know that I want to elaborate on that more, but I think that one of the things that, a process that looking at a new name should be thinking about is what is the purpose for renaming the school? And I don't mean purpose as in getting away from Woodrow Wilson, but rather, what do we want to be doing? Sending a message to students, to inspire them? Or to just be honoring somebody, or to be telling a story? I do want to remind everybody that I believe we now have statements from two individuals. Everybody else, we really want your statements so that we can include them in the record, and we'll be looking to mark up this legislation in October. I don't have any other questions for any of you who've testified. I really appreciate your taking the time. So you're all excused now, and we're going to call on the government witness, Shanita Bernie, who is the Communications and Engagement Officer for DCPS. Thank you all.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. And please proceed.
Hi. So, thank you for having me here. Good afternoon, Chairman Mendelson, members of the Committee of the Whole and staff. And I also just want to thank the members of the public that have testified, especially the two students, well, one alumni and one current student. Really appreciate it, listening to and hearing the testimonies there. I am Shanita Bernie, the Communications and Engagement Officer for the District of Columbia Public Schools. At DCPS, I support our goal to listen to and engage with families and stakeholders to build trust, share information, and gather feedback with a focus on closing the opportunity gap. Over the last six months, parents, families, and students have witnessed and been a part of the unique moment in history. In addition to adapting to new ways of communicating and learning, communities have responded to racial injustices as the world just has changed dramatically. At this pivotal moment in the fight to end racism and police brutality, I am proud to share that DCPS has responded to the call. We have maintained our commitment to support students and families every step of the way. This spring, our team worked tirelessly to provide a quality learning experience and to reopen strong this fall. We have taken several important steps to support our community, such as launching a parent university, which features online learning tools focused on answering questions top-of-mind and providing families with additional resources, creating a new universal cornerstone, which allows students to reflect and learn about themselves, aspects of their identities, how their experiences shape their view of the world, and what it means to be global citizens in this unprecedented time. And finally, to strengthen our equity work. During the summer of, this past summer, DCPS engaged teachers to serve as Race and Equity Fellows to audit all of the social studies and English-language arts curriculum and develop a digital version of the African-American History and Culture Course for students to engage on issues of race and equity. DCPS appreciates Mayor Bowser's work to convene the District of Columbia Facilities and Commemorative Expressions Working Group, D.C. Faces, in response to calls from the community, which has taken the important first steps towards addressing the names of public buildings and spaces by completing a comprehensive review. DCPS agrees with Mayor Bowser that the name of Wilson High School must change. Woodrow Wilson's racist legacy and policies of segregation acutely carried out against Black federal employees in the district and Black residents of Reno City, where the school now sits, make him an unseemly namesake for the school and does not reflect DCPS values as student-first, equity, excellence, teamwork, courage, and joy. At DCPS, where a majority of our school leaders and students and nearly half of our teachers identify as Black, we are committed to fulfilling the efforts of social activism and ensuring that the names we call our schools reflect our values and commitment to diversity. I do want to take some time to highlight that Wilson High School is not unique among our schools. We welcome further partnership as we continue to evaluate the names of schools across all eight wards, and whether they accurately reflect the District of Columbia's values. In doing so, DCPS will work to serve as an advocate for our students and families who are furthest from opportunity. School names help to identify the school community, establish a legacy, develop a sense of pride in the traditions of DCPS in our schools. School buildings create opportunities for students to engage and encounter holistic learning experiences and provide a space where students can feel both loved and challenged. Murals and shared communal spaces affirm school identity, honor a school's artistic and cultural heritage, support students, foster a sense of community, and fill students with pride. Since opening in 1936, the Ward Three High School has consistently been one of Washington, D.C.'s premier public high schools, with a student body from all over the city. As we look to our next steps, our goal is to inspire future generations of students and affirm students' cultures and communities through our school naming process. Successful renaming brings together two strands of important work: engagement around a proposed new name and updating the school facility, as well as any school materials to reflect the new name. Currently, there is no consensus on alternative names. Community engagement will be the first critical step in our approach to renaming this Ward Three High School. We appreciate the incredible work of the D.C. History and Justice Collective, which has already authentically engaged the community around removing Wilson's name from the Ward Three High School. They have found broad support among stakeholders, including current students and families, staff members, alumni, ANC's, and the broader D.C. community. For our next steps, we plan to solicit options for a new name, determine relative support, and propose a new name for this high school. This will involve surveys, engagement sessions, and historical research. Our goal is to have a final proposed name with broad input from the community by this winter. On the facility side, there are many spaces within a school building that display the name. The mascot, colors, these architectural elements help to shape the school's identity. For this building, we estimate the total facility cost to be approximately 1.2 million in capital funding, which includes athletic fields, banners, flooring, marquee, public art, signage, among other physical assets. Currently, DCPS's capital improvement plan, as approved by the D.C. Council, does not include these investments. As we look to the future, DCPS is fully committed to identifying an appropriate namesake that represents DCPS's mission and values and has made a significant impact on society to adequately mirror the rich legacy and activism of the school's community. To do this, we must also ensure there are adequate time and resources to maintain and build on the community's legacy. I appreciate the support of Mayor Bowser and the D.C. Council in this historic moment as we reflect on the joint responsibility that we share in creating safe, affirming, and empowering spaces for students in our communities. I do want to recognize that Wilson High School is just one of twenty-one school buildings that the mayor's D.C. Faces report identified as potentially in need of change. DCPS will work to ensure that the citywide renaming process moves forward equitably and works to empower the voices of diverse stakeholders. It is our goal that students are equipped to be leaders and change agents who positively influence their schools, communities, and the world. The time to examine how we can commemorate public spaces to honor and uplift the legacy of the District of Columbia is now. Thank you for your partnership. I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bernie. I do have some questions. When you say that DCPS has the goal to have a final proposed name for Wilson High School this winter, what does that mean? Does that mean December 22nd, which is the beginning of winter, or March 20th, which is the end of winter? Or sometime in the school year?
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask that question. I think, I don't have a specific date now, but we can certainly, when I think about winter, I think about before the end of this calendar year. But we can certainly give you a more solid date following this hearing.
That would be good. I would appreciate that. But that means over the next three and a half months?
Yeah, and that is our goal, and so we can, as we need to tweak that, as we look at what's possible, given everything that is sort of on the plate now with planning, whether we go back for hybrid learning, there's just, we want to make sure that we're able to get broad input. input and feedback from stakeholders, and so some of that will determine if we need to extend it. But the goal is to move swiftly, given the level of support, and begin the engagement process around alternative names.
And I would say that Wilson stands out among the schools in terms of the controversy.
Yes.
Did mention that Mayor Bowser's committee had looked at a total of 21 school buildings that maybe should have their names changed. It's not you're thinking that all 21 would move simultaneously, you would move on Wilson first and begin the process with the other schools?
That's correct. That's correct there. Because of the, the, the level of interest, the momentum, and quite frankly, given this charge across the country in terms of removing Woodrow Wilson's name, it feels particularly urgent, and the community certainly reflects that. So it is our interest to move swiftly on the Wilson renaming, kicking off that engagement around alternative names immediately, but also just, you know, reminding folks that as we, as we move forward, we are considering the other schools that will need to have a streamlined engagement process and around identifying alternative names and considering the next steps for moving forward with those.
I'm concerned about the $1.2 million price tag that you've identified. Could you provide us with an itemization of that?
Sure. I, we can give you, the facilities team has developed an itemized proposal that we can share with you. Essentially, what they, you know, they emphasize that it is a range, and I think Wilson, after their physical assets assessment, determined that it is on the, you know, there's a bit of sticker shock, it is on the higher end because of the assets that are there that range from a terrazzo floor with logo emblazoned in the atrium to stone, the name ingrained on stone, you know, monuments outside of the building that need to be addressed. And so, you know, these, these cost estimates are the best estimates to date that the facilities team has considered. Clearly, the na, the number and variety and the scale of the cost will vary across schools, and a further assessment for each school will take place. But right now, we've assessed these costs for, for Wilson.
Okay, well, you'll, but you'll, you'll provide us with a copy of the itemization. I think it's also worth looking at prioritizing some of those expenses. So, the, the, the name on the sign outside, and even the name if it's in stone over the door, strikes me as a higher priority than replacing the terrazzo floor. I mean, that's just, could be for a while, a legacy of the old school, just as the old diplomas are. So I think some prioritization might be, is worth considering as well. The, there was some testimony that individuals, I guess from the DC History and Justice Collective, approached DCPS a year ago, and felt like an initial positive response just grew into silence. I don't know that it's helpful to explore that too much now because DCPS seems committed to moving forward, but was there something going on then that we can be assured won't happen now? And that is a lack of interest?
Yeah, and it was definitely never lack of interest, and, you know, I've had conversations with some of the folks at the, the, the History and Justice Collective about this since then. I think, I mean, we don't have to spend as much time on this because we are moving forward, we are fully supportive, but initially, you know, there were, we wanted to make sure that we were thinking broadly on how we engaged the Wilson community, as well as some other school communities that were also showing up, interested in and expressing advocacy for a name change. And we wanted to make sure that we were approaching all of these schools from an equitable lens, and responding equitably across all of those in terms of how we were responding to them. And so, given the high fiscal cost that we were anticipating across Wilson, as well as other schools, knew that that was an area that we wanted to get some additional information on before we were able to move forward with any type of engagement around an alternative name. It was, we were really thrilled that the mayor established the DC Faces Task Force because it was always our interest to align any renaming effort of, of our public schools with, with a larger citywide effort.
But again, at this point, Woodrow Wilson High School has moved to the front of the line.
Yes.
Well, part of the resolution before us, that's what this, this hearing is about, is DCPS should act quickly to update its school naming protocol, which should include procedures for DCPS to seek community input on potential new names prior to specific name being proposed or otherwise selected, and procedures that permit a proposal to provide information on how the current name of the school does not represent the DCPS mission, vision, vision, and value. We, we, that includes DCPS, just went through a renaming of what's now Boone Elementary School. We're going through a renaming of what is currently Aton Elementary School. So it ought to be a process now. Does DCPS have a clear process, or are you rewriting the process?
So our process that we have was developed in most aligns with schools that are going through a, a current modernization. And so, as we, when we developed the, the, the school naming policy, it was the or to Boone renaming is what served as the impetus there. And so, as it was developed, we realized that the fiscal impact that was associated with it was largely addressed through the modernization process. The second school that, that we used our policy for, Ida B. Wells, although it wasn't a renaming, it was a, you know, complete new naming, was also going through a modernization. And so, the policy that we have really, you know, it, it does not speak to when a school is not going through a modernization, which also contributed to some of the delay around Aton, although we are ready to move forward with Aton. And so, one of the things that we're doing, and is a part of our next steps process, is relooking at our policy to make sure, and maybe it's not updating the policy, maybe it's, it's really just around our, our process that's associated with implementing the policy around how do we incorporate these conversations and decisions around the funding. There are also some smaller elements in the policy that like, a person to be considered as a, a, a new namesake has to have been deceased for two years. We want to change that. And so, there's some smaller, more process-oriented things, but then some larger implications for actually being able to activate on these name changes.
Can you send us a copy of your current policy?
Absolutely.
You know, you're mentioning the two-year reminds you of a thought that's been going through my mind. And that is, unlike my predecessors, I have held the council strictly to the two-year requirement in the law. And I think there's a value to that because when the inclination is to name a building or a space after somebody who recently died, our perspective is not the same as with passage of time. And I think that passage of time helps us better understand the importance of that individual. But there are, the law does allow for exceptions, like naming after an extraordinarily important public figure, like a President of the United States. I think that if you are looking at timing in your regulations, you should be careful to align with what the law is because your renaming process then has to come to the council.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be helpful if, if we're at odds. So if you get rid of the two-year and say, you know, it doesn't matter, and then everybody decides to name a building after, let's say, a figure, a, a member of the community who tragically died recently, but recently, it may be that the council not move forward, and we don't need that. So you should look at what the current laws and make sure that you align with that. And if you need, we can send you the current statute.
Yeah, that's helpful. I appreciate that. And, you know, part of what we are looking to take a look at and assess and determine if it makes sense to, you know, consider making changes is based on feedback that we're getting from our stakeholders as well. And, and, you know, certainly the names, alternative names, there's a tremendous amount of interest from a number of folks to consider a range of, of names of individuals that may not have been gone for two years, including some that are alive. And so, it's just an area that we wanted to take a closer look at to make sure we're being responsive to what we're hearing from the public.
Yeah. I think the council's been good about sticking, adhering to the two-year. We, we approved a statue for Marion Barry in front of the Wilson Building, but we acted after he had, after he had been dead for two years, more than two years. And I, I don't think we've made any exceptions to that. The resolution asks for, in addition to, I think pretty much what we've already covered, the DCPS should immediately convene virtual community meetings, at least one each with the school's local advisor, school advisory team, A N C three E, and the Tenley Town Neighbors Association, to consider whether the name Woodrow Wilson High School should be changed, and if so, what name should be selected. And following these meetings, DCPS should provide the council with a summary of the discussion, including any recommendations made. Do you have any objections to any part of that?
No.
And if you want, you could look at the language more carefully and then give us comments if you have on the language.
Okay.
Give me just a moment. I was checking with staff to see if they had any other questions. I believe Councilmember Che is still with us. Since I asked some questions, I don't know if you have any, anything additional?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You, you pretty much covered it. I, I, I know you didn't want to go in at length, but I was concerned about the testimony about how difficult it was to work with DCPS initially, and the length of time that it took, and what seemed to be kind of, I don't know, unresponsiveness. So I am concerned about that going forward if we have a process. And also, you brought up the issue about the cost, and there may be ways to triage what we need to, to pay for straight away. But I do think that even in, in an interim way, before we finalize everything, there are ways to simply cover up a name as opposed to replacing it so that we can act on this much more quickly than $1.2 million. So I, I think we want to, we might want to revisit that whole assessment because it may be used as a way to frustrate a sort of a prompt reaction to, to what the community is insisting on here, and what is right and just. So no, I don't have any questions, but both of those points, thank you for pursuing them. They were, they were the ones on my mind.
Yeah, well, we look forward to continuing to work with and improving to the extent that we need to, our relationship with and partnership with the DC History and Justice Collective. I feel confident that we'll, that partnership forward in a successful way.
I thank you, Ms. Bernie. I don't have any further questions for you. I do want to remind the witnesses, and I think we've used all of them, but to submit written statements. And if there's anybody else who wishes to submit a statement, we keep the record open for two weeks. And so, the record will close at 5:00 PM on September 29th, 2020. With that, I'm going to conclude this hearing. The time is 1:31 in the afternoon. Thank you. I thank everybody again, and we are adjourned.